I call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Grafino.
Here.
Trustee Carol.
Here.
Trustee Gately.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nedved.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Are these comments? Trustee comments?
I just have one comment. I would like to see if we could possibly have something on the future cow about chickens again. I know we've talked about it in the past couple of times, but I've had people approach me several times, especially the costs in the grocery store of eggs. So if.
So so I pulled trustees and there was no interest to bring it forward again. So that's the feeling that I got from everybody and I think they're satisfied the way it was. Okay. If I'm wrong. If you want to mention something different.
No, I just just didn't feel like that. We went through this before and people want chickens. Maybe they need to come in and talk to us. They can move it from there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just, I mean, just where I live and I actually never seen your house, Mark, but I mean, just the thought of chickens and in I have a small backyard. I just don't say that it's the right place for for it's for domestic pets, cats, dogs, whatever, but having chickens and then it opens. What about cows or what about? I just think that it opens up Pandora's box and I just don't think that when you're living in a in an urban area, suburban area, that it's appropriate to have chickens in the backyard.
Just one thing to add to that, too. We did get an email from a resident recently. So outside of chickens, someone to bring up our regulations on backyard bees. And we actually, that's another thing we prohibit in our code. Bees.
I don't know if I heard you right.
Bees. So in those regards, when we have someone who approaches the village about chickens or bees or anything that's prohibited in the code, we basically give them an update and let them know where at the internal level, if there's been any discussions at the staff to bring something forward to the board. In this case, we said, you know what? It hasn't come up. We haven't talked about it. And then we do direct them to the board to say if, you know, to petition an ordinance to be changed. That's what you would do is if there's no plans to change it is to come to a board meeting or write your, you know, your trustees and the mayor and let them know how you feel about it.
All right. Thank you. Discussion under item one, Steve.
Item number one for discussion tonight is a mid-year financial review. So this is something that we've done in the past. Jason is going to walk us through basically where we're at. We're about seven months into the fiscal year and Jason's going to give you a financial update of how the village is doing right now.
Thank you. As we've been working through the upcoming budget, we just want to give the board an update as kind of where we're standing with this current year as we're getting ready to look at the next year. So if you go to the next slide, please. So here's a high level summary of all the village funds through November of twenty twenty-two, which represents the halfway point for this current fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Overall, the villages see an increase of six point nine million and fund balance and net position across all funds. This is led by the general fund, which has increased just under two point seven million. Some of these results what you see here are kind of timing based, just based on projects and when they're happening. Example, that would be the water fund and the capital projects fund. They're currently showing net increases, but if you go back to the budget, both funds were actually budgeted to decrease for the year. So when we get to the next six months, things might be look different here versus what we're seeing here. But so far through the first six months, everything looks like it's in pretty good shape. Next slide, please. So next I'm going to go through each of the major funds and some of the some of the big picture revenue items. So starting with the general fund, sales tax revenue represents the largest revenue source of the general fund, accounting for just under fifty percent of all revenues. As you can see from the chart, revenues have increased steadily over the last five years. This is partly due to the implementation of the three percent municipal cannabis tax in July of twenty twenty, but then also more recently, a lot of the, you know, prices of car prices and other goods have increased significantly, which have resulted in higher sales tax revenue. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget actually projected revenues conservatively at six point five million. This was actually a budgeted decrease over what we saw last year, which came in at seven point one million. We projected there to be a decline in sales tax revenue. Just because there were recessionary concerns going on when we were putting the budget together, we really just didn't know kind of how things were going to shake out. But looking at this year, we're trending towards having another seven million dollar sales tax revenue so significantly over where we thought the budget was. Going forward, early projections for next year, we're looking at about six point nine million in the sales tax. But again, this this could change as we get more information in these upcoming months as to where this current fiscal year is gonna is going to end up. Next slide. Income tax revenue. It's another major revenue of the general fund. This is distributed to the bill, the village based on a per capita basis from the state. Revenue, as you could see, has been on a steady incline over the past five years. This has been primarily tied to strong individual corporate tax returns. Revenue actually peaked last year at two point eight million dollars. Based on the current estimates and kind of where money is coming in this year and the timing of it, we're trending at about two point five million, which would be our budget projection of two point three million dollars, but kind of fall short from last year. Even though we're we're trending better than last year, currently through these first six months, we had some some larger tax payments in the back half of last year, which pushed us way higher. Next year, we also anticipate this to be in a two point five to two point six million dollar range based on the early projections. Next. Use tax. So this is another tax that's distributed to all communities based on a per capita basis. A use tax has seen a few changes over the years and it's kind of affected the way the villages revenues have looked. Going back to twenty eighteen, online retailers began collecting use tax and remitted it for remitted to the state. So for this, for all the online sales, as you could see, this had a positive impact on use taxes. We started seeing increases, which culminated to twenty twenty-one. But then in twenty twenty-one, the state passed the leveling the playing field act, which actually changed it to where online resellers within Illinois that had that inventory located to Illinois within Illinois, shipping to Illinois addresses, those had to start change basically charging regular sales tax based on the destination where they're actually shipping it to from the Illinois inventory. So effectively, this kind of shifted a negative effect to the use tax, but a positive effect to the sales tax. So we're on the sales tax. We're now actually collecting sales tax directly from like amazon.com and eBay and things like that. Going forward, we're projecting about seven hundred and nine thousand dollars, which is slightly above budget and consistent with last year. Property tax revenue. So the twenty twenty-one tax levy, which is meant to fund this current fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, came in at just over two point six million. Of this, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars was part of the general fund to help general operations. The twenty-two tax levy, which was passed last month, which is meant to fund this upcoming budget year was a total levy of two million, six hundred and ninety thousand. So even though this is an increase over last year's, we that increase is due to capturing the new construction. If you remember back to last year's, we did not apply any CPI increase to the levy. It was only capturing the value of that new construction, which which got that increase. Next year, we expect the general fund to have approximately seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from the levy, which is a decrease last year, but it's really just a reallocations as we saw that that increase in the police pension fund contribution. So we reallocated that to where less was dependent on the on the the general fund operations, but more towards the police pension. And then finally, building permits is another major revenue of the general fund. Building permits so far this year has been strong at four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the first six months. Revenue has been led primarily by our packing company and the seasons apartment complex. Revenue this year, we projected about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which should be down from last year, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, but more than double the amount that we budgeted at three hundred thousand this year. So last year, you know, it was really big into the Lincoln Valley subdivision, a lot of permit revenue related to that, some other more commercial buildings. You know, this revenue fluctuates from year to year, just based on what's going on within the village. So we usually try to budget this one fairly conservatively around three hundred thousand dollars. And then anything that comes in is kind of above and beyond that. Next. And finally, general fund expenditures and reserves. Expenditures so far this year are trending well. A year to date, we're about four hundred and fourteen thousand under where we projected for the first six months. This is mainly driven by salaries and benefits being about two hundred and twelve thousand under. This relates to, you know, there's a lot of turnover, retirements in the police department. So that's had a positive impact on on saving against this personnel budget. The civil engineer position, which we budgeted for this year was just hired in January. So you figure we had seven months of essentially no cost relate to that one. And then we will see a pickup here because we just agreed to the police union contract, which will have a retro payment. So I figure all those raises for the first six months of the year, which hadn't been applied, will get caught up here within the next month. Also, dispatch services came in about a hundred and nineteen thousand under budget from where we anticipated. We still do have a six hundred thousand dollar transfer from the general funds to the capital projects fund planned this year. The past two years, this month, this amount's been almost six thousand dollars or six million dollars. So that's been transferred from the general fund to the capital. Fund balance as of June first this year was eight point five million, which is sixty-nine and a half percent reserve. As a reminder, the village's reserve policy is forty to fifty percent. So we're well above that. And then based on the preliminary projections we have so far, we're we're projecting about a one point two to one point five million dollar surplus in the general fund, which is on top of the already planned six hundred thousand dollar capital transfer. So when we come back at the end of the year, we could be looking at making additional cap capital transfers, or maybe we can make additional contributions to the police pension fund since we have seen those numbers increase. Maybe we can try to kick in more to try to drive that number down a little bit. All right. Now going into the TIF funds. The Route thirty-one TIF fund saw a decrease of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in property tax revenue. This was due to amending the boundaries within the TIF, moving some parcels to United TIF. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget included an equity transfer of a million dollars from Route thirty-one to United TIF, basically just to establish the United TIF from from those parcels that were were moved. Property tax in the United TIF, it was just under a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Since basically this was the first year. It'll take a few years before we get that the revenue in that fund built up. But within the United TIF fund, there was the purchase of twenty-three North Lincoln Way using TIF funds. We're also looking at additional properties within that block one area to acquire to to help build up that that area. Now moving into the capital projects fund. The non-home rule sales tax is the largest revenue source of the capital projects fund. Just a reminder, this is a half a percent sales tax. But this does not apply to vehicle sales. So this is just basically goods, goods sold, no vehicles. Even though this doesn't include vehicles or the three percent municipal cannabis tax, you see kind of a similar trend here that has followed over the past five years, similar to sales tax. So increases here could be tied more to consumer spending and just general price increases and the taxes charged on that. Current revenue projections are just over one point four million, which is slightly down from last year, but well ahead of the current budget projection of one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Similar to sales tax, sorry, similar to sales tax, we projected that would have decreased a little bit just to the general overall economic situation when we're putting the numbers together. Some additional revenues in the capital projects fund. Utility tax, which is made up of the electricity tax and gas tax a few years ago, and you see it in the blue on this chart here. Telecommunications tax also used to be a capital projects revenue, but that was pushed over to the general fund. So now it's just the gas tax and electricity within the capital projects. Electricity tax year to date, two hundred and eight thousand, which is down slightly about seventy-eight hundred dollars from last year through November. Gas tax, which makes up a smaller portion, about eighty-six thousand dollars so far. That's actually up significantly compared to last year, twenty-nine thousand dollars. So in total, utility taxes up on the year, just in different sources, different ways. Another significant revenue source within the capital projects fund is traffic impact fees. The capital projects fees is collected at four hundred and ninety thousand to date, which is primarily to the season's apartment complex. Again, this source varies significantly from year to year, just depending on what developments are going on. Just a quick comparison, last year revenue for the whole year was only forty-five thousand dollars. So significant amount of revenue this year coming in just from that one permit.
And just the point of clarification, you see gas tax, that's natural gas.
Oh, yes.
Not gasoline. So that's that's natural gas.
All right. Now getting into the expenses and the reserve of the capital projects fund. Noted here are some of the projects that we had budgeted and planned for the year. As you see, you know, the road program, the Ridge Road Storm Sewer, Public Works Facility, Architectural Design and Locust Spruce Chestnut Road. Some of these have been started, some have not been started. They'll be later this year. These are the things that we anticipate still to occur this year. You know, as mentioned earlier, we're planning another six hundred thousand dollar transfer from general. The past three years, this has been about six point seven million dollars. So significant amount of money coming over from the general fund into the capital products fund, which leads to the reserve being fairly healthy at ten point four million dollars. We don't currently have a stated minimum reserve policy within this fund. But these funds have been accumulated over time to help save and utilize for future capital projects. Next, getting into the water fund. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the water, on the water fund, just because we have a another, an additional agenda item to discuss on this one. Water sales can fluctuate year to year, just depending on a number of factors, whether it be weather, new users, but it's been fairly consistent over the last five years. This year, water sales are trending at about two point five million dollars, which is down from last year, primarily just down to lower usage. So I can't remember if we had a just maybe a drier summer or a wetter summer. So just not a lot of use as much in the summertime. One revenue to point out, though, is water connection fees. The villages collected six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in connection fees so far this year, again, primarily driven by the seasons apartments. Over the past few years, there's been a fairly strong revenue within the water fund, primarily due to the Lincoln Valley subdivision. So that's just the revenue to highlight. Water fund expenses and reserve. I've noticed noted that here are some of the major projects budgeted and planned this year. A lot of these are either in progress or still to plan. So it's the the other half that locusts, chestnuts, spruce, that these are the actual water mains related to the streets. And then we have some well, five and six improvements planned. In addition, we had a four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar debt payment, which was made on January first. Now this water debt goes through January first, two thousand and thirty-two, and it's roughly about the same amount, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, give or take annually each year. Just differs by how much of its principal and how much of its interest. The water fund reserve balance was just over seven point six million dollars at June first. We did budget for a reduction in the reserve of one point three million dollars going back to the to the budget. So so we are plant, we were planning on to use some of this reserve balance during this current year. And lately, we've been focused on reviewing the future operations within the fund and then the capital, which we're lining up just to make sure the rates reflect, you know, what the future needs of the water system are. And then finally, just wanted to point out some staffing things, you know, at the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two committee, the whole meeting, while discussing the the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we identified some certain areas of needs to address during this upcoming budget. So for many internal staff discussions, we have identified a possible reorganization opportunity that we believe can address these area. And those areas were human resources, some additional help on the police administration side, economic development and code enforcement. This plan that we're looking at would would involve hiring one new full-time position and then restructuring some other current positions to help utilize current staff talents. Overall, we would think this plan would add a total of one point three FTEs or full-time equivalents to the authorized position list. So we'd see it going from sixty-nine point one to seventy point four total full-time equivalents. In addition, we're currently engaged in a compensation and classification study. This is what Gov HR. So as we work through this, I think the current plan is so these these positions and the restructuring as well as any possible salary adjustments for the current staff to bring this back during the budget review. There are also some additional positions we're looking at for the next year. One of them would be a part-time committee service officer. This would be funded from the general fund. Additionally, a public work streets labor also funded from the general fund and then a water labor position, which would be funded from the water fund. That includes concludes everything I wanted to cover tonight. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I think we're good. Thank you. All right. Item two, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is a discussion of the village's water rates. As you know, selling water and providing safe water is one of our primary functions at the village. At this time, what we're looking at is Jason alluded to in the previous presentation is starting to address needs, upcoming maintenance projects as our infrastructure treatment plan, so on, is are getting older. We're starting to put together a a long-term plan, so to speak, to aggressively go after those capital projects so that we can continue to maintain and function properly. With that, we're going to walk you through a presentation. The the keys to to get out of the presentation is that the rate increase that we're talking about tonight is the options that we're showing you are just options and they're up for discussion, but they're over a five-year period. So none of this is set in stone. The idea is that this is where we'd like to be in five years. But every year, the board has an opportunity. If projects fluctuate and change and cost or funding sources become available, the rate increases could, you know, be a little higher or a little lower depending on how that pans out. So this is just a a plan. And then we'd like to discuss the upcoming issues in the water fund. So Jason, would you please?
Yes, thanks. All right. So I thought the first place we could start here is go through the last two water crates, water increases the village has had. In two thousand and ten, the village increased both the base rate, so that the first three thousand gallons used, and then the water usage rate. So the base rate for the first three thousand gallons increased from ten dollars and ninety cents to the its current sixteen dollars bimonthly. The water per one thousand. So this is everything after that first three thousand increase from three dollars and forty-one cents to three dollars and fifty-five cents. These rates stayed the same up until two thousand and eighteen, which in two thousand and eighteen, the rate per one thousand gallons after three thousand increased from three dollars and fifty-five cents to its current three dollars and seventy cents. The sixteen dollar bimonthly rate for the first three thousand did not change. The village should do one additional thing just to help offset that increase. We reduced the sanitary sewer rate from thirty-five cents to fifteen cents. So the total build rate to the residents actually decreased five cents to three dollars and eighty-five cents. The one thing we aren't going to touch on tonight is that sanitary sewer rate. It's possible that, you know, in the next year or two, we'll look at that sanitary sewer rate at the fifteen cents per thousand. But within that fund right now, we have a well over a million dollars of reserve. So it's not as, you know, time sensitive to to look at that rate. That one might be a future one to look at. So next I want to get into some of the major operating expenses within the budget, within the water fund. The total budgeted operating expenses were two point nine million for this current budget year. This is made up of personnel of seven hundred and fifteen thousand. So this is all the salary benefits of the five full-time employees who are housed in the water fund. Next, we have four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of utilities for all the treatment plants and water wells, repairs and maintenance of the facilities, vehicles, equipment at four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, supplies and professional services of seven hundred and thirty-five. So this means all the chemicals, the insurance, buying water meters, engineering, any kind of studies, administrative charges make up that. Finally, I mentioned we had that the debt principal and interest, four hundred and ninety-six thousand. So that would be the two interest payments and the one principal payment for for the year. And then looking into the future, a lot of these expenses, we're projecting that they're going to increase anywhere from two to four and a half percent. Four and a half percent being more of the personnel, when you take in any kind of union contractual raises, employees moving steps, health insurance increases. So a lot of these these expenditures aren't going to be, you know, set in stone over the next year. They're going to, we're going to see increases most likely. So the current status of the water fund. In the current budget, when you take the operating revenues, so basically water sales permits, and then you back out the operating expenses that I I mentioned, we're left with approximately about a three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar net in that increase. So this does not include any capital expenditures. We currently have a higher than usual reserve within the water fund at seven point six million dollars. This is due primarily because we knew that there were a lot of major projects coming, specifically the central water tower, which got pushed. So we were saving knowing that these things were were coming online, but ended up not doing them and pushing them out. We actually budgeted, as I mentioned, the the twenty-two, twenty-three year, the water fund to actually lose the one point three million dollars of reserve just due to the capital investment we're putting into the water fund. In the future, we know the lead service, the the lead service line replacement project is approaching. Currently, we're in the process of completing the inventory for that, but estimate this could be up to four million dollars once it's all said and done. We do have two point four million in the ARPA or the American Rescue Plan Act funds that could be designated for this project or other projects within the water fund. And then we're also looking at an additional water labor within the water fund into next year's budget, which would increase the headcount to six to six.
Jason, if you wouldn't mind, on the lead service line inventory, so just to break that down. Essentially, what you're looking at is four million dollars is if we end up with around four hundred homes at ten thousand dollars a home to put in the new copper line from the the village's water service to the actual house. As you know, the state law now requires that anytime we disturb on the private side, it's still, you have to put a new line in if you see that, even on the private side, if they have led. The board had talked about this a while ago of using the ARPA funds as a funding source to pay for that at full cost to the resident. As of right now, no final decision has been made on that topic, but we're assuming for this purpose that we're looking at a four million dollar hit for that project and that two point four million of ARPA would go towards it. Thanks, Jason.
So here's a graph that I just wanted to show that projects the water fund over the next five years. And that red line in the middle being operating revenues, assuming that we don't increase rates. So as I mentioned earlier, the the amount of of operating revenues over the the operate, operating expenditures, which would be that orange, gray and yellow those bars in the in the graph. It doesn't leave much room here. Once we pay for the operation. So there's not really a lot of money there for capital. So in this scenario, we're assuming the green, the blue bars, they're two million dollars annually of capital and the water labor position baked into the personnel. So assuming that, you know, assuming we don't increase water rates, we're basically using water reserves to pay for that capital amount, which in this scenario, that that reserve balance would be depleted by the years twenty-five, twenty-six. So, you know, we're just trying to show here that assuming you know, expenditures are going, are going to be going up every year and rates kind of stay the same. And maybe we'll get slight increase in revenue just due to additional users in the system, you know, kind of a little bit each each year. We're going to slightly run out of money to be able to do capital expenditures. So here, staff has been working on putting together, you know, capital plan for the water fund and identified some capital, some projects that are going to be identified or prioritized over the next ten years. Items I I have here bolded in italics are our items we're really looking at over the next two years. Some of the amounts here, the totals are going to be differ from what's actually going to be done over the next couple of years. For example, I have that Fox River Water Main Crossing three. We probably plan on doing two of them over the next two years. Maybe that third one might fall within year three or four. So there are also a lot of, you know, treatment plant items on here to which we're going to start getting a bulk of them done within the next, you know, two years, but the the rest of them might be, say, five years out. So we really want to try to highlight, you know, on this slide and the next slide, some of the the big ticket items that we have teed up here over the next five to 10 years, but primarily in the next two years. A lot of a lot of water main replacements. I think there's just about seven point five million that we're targeting over the next five years, just in water main replacements. And again, I mentioned the the target of our capital plan is about two million dollars a year over the next five years. So it's going to be some combination of these projects. Maybe we might have to split it within, you know, over two budget years, you know, for some of these larger ones to get done. But our our target here is about two million dollars a year for the next five years. So what we did was we kind of broke this out into two different options to to try to move forward and look at. The first rate we're presenting here is for the water usage rate only. So we'd be targeting a cumulative increase of fifty percent over the spread over five years. So the effective rate June 1st, 2023 would be a 15% increase to $4.26 per dollars or cents per 1,000 for anything over 3,000. The minimum charge of $16 bimonthly for the first 3,000 would remain the same. So really, in this case, you call it was the low users or, you know, potentially, you know, a large number of our seniors would not really see an increase or a minimal increase if they only use maybe 1,000 over that 3,000. So we estimate this at about 1,800 users out of the 6,000 or so residential. So about 30% of our residential users under this scenario wouldn't see a rate increase if they use, you know, the one, two or 3,000 gallons every every two months. So for an average bill estimated at using 11,000 gallons bimonthly, this would result in a $4.44 bill increase. So the water only portion of your bill, you'd expect to go from $45.60 to $50.04 next year. And again, these figures are ignoring the $15 sanitary sewer since that would be the same rate on either this option I show, we show you. Just a couple of quick things of note, as I mentioned, we're we're looking at these water rates saying that some of the money is going to become from a water rate increase, but some of the money is also going to be using some of the reserve we have. So in in both of these scenarios, we're going to show you 4.7 million dollars is used from reserve. So of that, that seven and a half million dollar reserve balance I mentioned, we're we're planning on using about 4.7 million of that plus that 2.4 million ARPA. So we're trying to use those as ways to reduce or offset the the rate increase we're we're having to charge the the residents. Do you want to move on to the second? So here's where we actually say we're going to increase the water usage rate, plus we're going to look at that minimum charge, which we've had on the book since 2010. In this one, the water rate would have a cumulative impact of a increase of 42 and a half percent over five years. In addition, the monthly minimum would raise $4 to $20 bimonthly. In this scenario, all all users of the system would see an increase in the bill, including those that were 3,000 and less, rather than seeing a $16 bill for water, they see now seeing a $20. An average estimated bill at 11,000 gallons bimonthly would result in $6.96 bill increase on average next next year. Since we're raising the base fee in this option, people will see a slightly higher increase next year. You know, if you look back at the first option we had, I said it was about $4.40. We're seeing actually a slightly higher increase under this one. But each additional year after that is a less of an increase since we're we're able to walk down the actual water user usage rate increase each of those years. Whether it's this option or the other option, we kind of designed these to generate the same amount of money coming into the fund over that five year period and really ending that five year period at about a 56, 57% reserve balance. So maintaining a a pretty healthy reserve in that fund, yet using some of some of that reserve and the the ARPA money if we need to. So here's an updated version of that that spreadsheet I showed earlier. So assuming a water, either water rate increase, you know, as I mentioned, both are designed to generate about the same amount of money. But now we're well above those three bars at the bottom, the orange, gray and yellow. We're well above maintaining our operating and actually paying for some of our capital each year with the additional revenue that we're that we're generating. And so here's a quick table of a compare, all our comparable rates from some of the surround surrounding municipalities. So this is as if everybody were billed on 11,000 gallons billed bimonthly, and we converted some of these, some people do cubic feet, some people do gallons. So we converted everything to the rate per 1,000 gallons. And a lot of these rates have not been changed. Some some of these municipalities have played rep play planned rate increases that we haven't worked into these numbers yet, just because they haven't gone on the books yet. But whether we do option one, we could do an option one or option two, North Aurora would still maintain the lowest water rates and the lowest estimated bill at $52 or $50 per per 11,000. And just that the thing of note, you know, I mentioned we were doing a cumulative 50% or a cumulative 42 and a half percent, spreading that over five years. I mean, even if we we went to those bottom, those bottom rate numbers of that we showed that will that water usage rate we get to at the end of five years, we would still have bills at $63.55 or 6447. So even if we kind of just jumped all the way down to the bottom versus what everybody else is today, we still have some of the the cheapest water rates available around. So going forward, we're hoping to get some feedback and further directions from the board on how to proceed, you know, our ultimately, our goal is to determine a direction to take when we're or preparing for this upcoming budget year. This would be either hopefully be focusing on looking at just the water rate, or do we want to do a water rate minimum? Or there are additional options the board wants us to come back and and present. Really, for us, either option work would work because, you know, as I mentioned, we kind of designed those to to generate the same amount of money and have the same ending reserve balance of about 56, 57% after five years. Once we decided on a scenario or an option to go with, our plan would become, they'd come back in May and present a ordinance to change the water rates effective June 1st, 23. And then also, you know, our plan would be to monitor the water fund over these next few years as these capital things and this capital plan gets up and going. And even though we said 50% over five years, if if we start seeing delays in certain capital projects, you know, that was just an initial plan and there's always flexibility. So every year we plan to come back to the board with a recommendation for the water rates, just depending on on how much money, you know, say there's additional large users come come into the water fund that increase revenue just based on usage, then maybe there there might be, you know, less of an it an increase or an impact we need to be asking for.
Hey, Jason, what's the 11,000 gallon rate now?
Uh, I think I had another 40, 45, 60.
All right.
I think if you, yeah, 45, 60.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So either either one, we're looking at about four and a half to just under $7 increase, no matter how, which way that we look at it in these two presented.
The thing with option one, when you, when you look at it, the the rate increase is higher 15% versus 10 in the first year. But you keep the base rate the exact same. So to like, I want to hit back on that. So you're looking at about 30% of our users wouldn't even see a rate increase at all in their bills because we do have quite a bit of users that are 3,000 gallons or less already, and they are at that minimum charge. So essentially, the second option, it's a higher increase. The idea of bumping up the base charge is that everyone pays into the same system that the water goes through. So, you know, is it fair to do it that way? And everyone spreads it across? Or do you do it the other way and say, well, you use more water? So you should have a slightly higher rate?
We have, I'm sorry.
Is Jason Dunn?
Yes.
Yes, that was actually.
Yep.
Oh, good.
We have businesses that are using pretty, pretty excessive amounts of water. Have we considered a like an excess use rate above and beyond a certain amount like 15 or 18,000 gallons that might offset? Or have we done run any numbers?
If you're, if you're going to, and I'll let Jason answer, but 15 or 18,000 gallons is not a high bill. That's
Okay, whatever. I mean, I don't know what a high bill is.
Right. So 11,000 is the average. So when you look at all of our users in the system, Jason came up with 11,000 because basically, the average residential bill may vary in the summertime to up to some businesses, small businesses, residential up to 50,000, you know, gallons, depending on how they water or or pools or whatnot in the summertime. So the 11,000 is the average of what we consider a residential bill throughout the year. So, you know, for instance, at my house, I use 14 or 15,000 gallons for my family. I know Jason uses less than that. We come out to that, that 11,000 is right about to split between the two of us.
So do we have businesses using in excess of 50,000 gallons?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So why don't we hit up some of those businesses?
Yeah, Jason. Yeah, Jason. Sure. So Jason, correct me if I'm wrong. So we have roughly 75 users that use 100,000 or more. So that's the
Yes.
I'm saying 100,000. That's a huge drop off. You go from
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
So you're talking about over 6,000 users in the system. Most of them use 100,000 or less. Then you start to drop off. You have 75 users or so at 100,000. It goes up to, I think you estimated maybe eight or nine when you get to half a million over two months. And then there's only four current users that hit a million gallons over a two month period.
My my only point is if we have like 5% of our users that are using 25% of our water consumption in a given year, and I'm just, I I don't, I'm not doing the math. I'm just why, why would we not make that 5% pay a higher rate in order to offset increases to the citizens that aren't using? They're not using anywhere near that.
Yeah. And that's when we looked at the other towns. I'm not aware of any town that has a high user rate. They, there are some that may fluctuate on on utilities, but the argument is this, I mean, you can, if the board wants us to look at that, we absolutely can. The flip side of that is they're also paying their proportional share because they're using a million gallons and they're paying for that million gallon. So it can
That's not really true, though, if we have to have more equipment to subsidize those. I agree with Mark to some degree. I think because they they make a profit off our water. A lot of these places need that water. That's what they steam and they're washing items and they're washing food and, you know, they're making money off it. Now, our homeowners, we're not, you know, or watering our grass or flushing the toilet, you know, so it'd be nice if there would be a way to, there'd be some kind of, you know, jumped up payment schedule for those that are because we're going to need another water tower because of some of the users and you know, it goes on and on and on. We need more work in the radium. We got to flush pipes. We got to, you know, is that because of the homeowners? Yeah, they're part of the user, but if they're making money off of, you know, our service, maybe there should be a raised schedule for that kind of stuff. So I think there's something to think about for that.
Sure. Like I said, we didn't, because it's always been charged proportionally, none of that's included in this tonight. Definitely something we could look at if the board wants to go that route. The big question for Jason and I has always been if you're going to come back and ask us for a high user, what's a high user? Because it's easy to say the four that are above a million are clearly high users. But and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, when you see, when you're around the 100,000 number, that's where you're starting to see like restaurants, right?
Yeah, there's some restaurants in that 100,000 range. And then when you start getting up into the, you know, a couple hundred thousand range, then you start seeing some of those, you know, assisted living facilities. So this is an option, I think, you know, we looked at initially, but we just couldn't. It it was one of those things we couldn't draw that line to say, you know, do we want to hit the the super high users? Or we want to drop it down and start hitting restaurants and and some of the senior homes and assist facility homes and we kind of just didn't know where to draw that line initially.
Well, you don't need a line. You could have it like a step process, you know, so many at 100,000, so many at 500,000 and so forth. I think it's a great idea to consider and to take a look at.
Well, I don't know. I got, I have to interject. I don't know if that four users or if it's more than four users, how that government is going to get us to what we need to be at. If you're asking me tonight, if I had to pick between the one or a two option, I liked the one option just for the fact that the minimum charge stays the same for the first 3,000. I don't know if you're going to punish the businesses and how much that's going to get us to where we need to be overall. Maybe, I don't know. But if we're down, we're for down millions of dollars in just where we have to be. Surcharge in businesses, I don't think is going to get us there. I don't, I don't see it's getting
I wanted to say something, Mark. I don't mean the four people at the top. I mean, maybe the top 5% or the top 3% or something like that, something like that. And and to follow up from what Mark is saying, I think this should be in addition to these rate increases. I'm not saying in lieu of, is that what where you are?
Well, I I don't know because we don't have the information. I would like, I'd be curious to know, like, is there a percentage if like, if is there 5% of our consumers, our water consumers are, what percentage are those top 5% consuming out of the total amount of water? And if they're consuming 20 or 25 or 30%, then I think that there should be some sort of surcharge for that.
I I need to ask this question. Now, do the other municipalities surcharge businesses? I don't think they do. So you got to look at, we we're pretty business friendly here. We have been since I've been on the board. We're going to be pushing them to the brink of maybe leaving us, or they have absorbed some extra costs like somewhere our restaurants. So I guess you'd have to figure that out. I I don't know. I don't, I don't know if that's the route to go. And I say that just because just because I don't think the extra surcharge is going to get us where we have to be.
Well, but I don't think we know until we know.
Well, okay, well, find out.
I I agree with Trusty Gaylord, as far as I'm concerned with the seniors, so keeping it at 16. I think 30% are, I mean, I don't know how much, how many seniors are of that 30%, but I think that
Can you go back one slide?
Option one.
I mean, it's, it's, what are we looking at there? Uh, the, yeah, the increase goes up from 370 to it's 594 in five years, right? Is that what I'm seeing there? I mean, we we have to have water. We have to supply water. It's got to be clean. It's got to be drinkable. Well, if we don't do one of these options, we're, we're, we're not doing our job here. I mean, just, and it's not that like it's a big, yeah, it's a, it's a slight increase. But we need to have water.
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of option one. My point or my my opinion would be pay for what you use. So I think we'd be helping out people that have fixed incomes by leaving the, you know, the the minimum charge the same. And then, you know, since they use probably less water. And then as far as businesses, I I would like to, I guess I'd be interested to see if there's any other examples of businesses being charged something differently. But, you know, to Steve's point, they are paying for what they're using. So I I'm kind of on both sides of the fence on that. I I wouldn't mind seeing information on it, though. I do have one other question, though, kind of unrelated to cost is, you know, I'm hearing, I think it's, is it Oswego? Are they having all kinds of discussions about their water?
They're changing their water source.
Right. And because they're they think they're going to run out of water at some point?
So some of the towns to the south of us, Montgomery, Yorkville, Oswego have embarked in looking at their water source because they're on the same aquifer as us. And I, I'm like, I can't get into it 100%, but the way it recharges or whatnot in that part of the aquifer, they are looking for ways to quickly go to a different water source, and they were looking to go towards Lake Michigan water. Jason comes from a past community that buys Lake Michigan water, and he can tell you that the way that works basically is when you go to Lake Michigan water, you have to do two things. You have to A, buy the water through an agency that provides the water. So there's an initial charge. That charge in Jason's last town was at least $5 per 1,000 gallons just for the water. And then you have to pay for the infrastructure. So in some of these towns, you hear numbers like 25, 30 million dollars that they have to bond. So rates when you switch Lake Michigan water can significantly jump from $6 to 1,000 gallons to 12, 13, $14, 1,000 gallons. There's towns that have that rate around us or to the east of us already. So because we control our water source in the sense that we take it from the ground and treat it and then sell it, we are, we cut out that middle man of having to buy water. But our aquifer is a finite resource. So we are actually engaged currently in a water source study. That's one of the studies we're doing with consulting firm EEI. And they are looking at the validity of that aquifer for the future and whether or not one day we will have to change our water source. And we're talking down the road, but it's funny, we didn't put it on the list, but one of the projects that John had identified as future capital was whether or not to build another treatment plant. And, you know, you're talking, who knows, $15 million for a treatment plant. And the reason we put it on the list is because it's it's far enough out that you say by that time you would know what your water source is going to be. If wells are sufficient for the future or a combination of shallow and deep, which we know we don't really have a lot of shallow wells in our area, you look at that and say, okay, maybe we we need another treatment plant or hey, can we buy our water from another community and have them treated and then store it and distribute it? There's multiple things you have to look at before you make a huge capital investment like that. So that's a study that's going on. The other main study that we're doing right now is a water flow study, so a flow model they call it. And they basically are looking at all of our water infrastructure, the users, where the the pressures are, the different parts where we may need to upgrade our infrastructure over time. We are looking at the high end users and what kind of water they're using and whether or not, you know, they have sufficient fire flows throughout the community, things like that. And that study is actually taking place right now. And that should be done hopefully in a few months.
I I just think it's the the way I I'm for option one, if that's the only option. But I think that the way this is set up is we're asking our citizens But I think that the way this is set up is we're asking our citizens to subsidize our high-end users because they're high-end users. And if we build another water treatments plan or add a well or, uh, that, that's not because we're adding 200 residential users. That's because we're asking, we've got businesses that we have to ask, go in and tell them they're using too much water. And those businesses should pay more than, uh, grandma who is on a fixed income. But e- even if we don't change it, but, uh, or a family of four in North Aurora that is, you know, struggling to pay other increases. I, 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 I'm not talking about punishing businesses. What I'm talking about is not asking the citizens to subsidize their growing business on the backs of the citizens of North Aurora. And I think it, because the whole purpose is we bring in business to subsidize citizens, not the other way around.
We are paying taxes too.
But the thing about it is, is that.
They paid like three different types of taxes. Okay. So just look at that. What is the business? Say how much you want to surcharge them. You want to put them to the brink where it's going to cost them too much to stay here? Or what do you want to do? You want to charge them, uh, uh, maybe increase their rate 50%? But if they're using a million gallons, they're paying the same as everybody else. Even if they did, e- even if you surcharge them, I'm telling you, the, the money that you surcharge them isn't enough where we need to be. That's my point.
Well, I don't think Mark's saying they only surcharge the businesses, but I, I, I kind of, I don't know that I agree with the premise that the businesses, uh, the residents are subsidizing the businesses. The businesses are paying more because they're paying for every bit of water that they're using. So they're paying more by virtue of the fact that they're paying an increase and everybody's contributing to the system that they're all using. So if they're using a million gallons or whatever it is, they're paying an increased rate for a million gallons. So I'm not sure that I see that the residents are subsidizing the businesses. The businesses are paying, they're using more and therefore they're paying more. So, I mean, I like option one and that way it, it keeps that cost down. I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not adverse to looking at what that might be. If you want to come back, we can take a look at it. I, I just think that they're, they will be paying more because they use more water. So everybody will be paying something. So I'm, you know, that's where I'm at on it.
Like I've said earlier, anything can change. That's just, I think the mindset of why towns set it up that way is the water fund is self-sufficient. So the water fund is, uh, it's an enterprise fund. It's designed like a business. It's supposed to self-sustain itself. So water rates, water connection fees, those are the, the revenues that you take in. You pay for your employees in the water department from the water fund and it's, and it's basically a, a business account. So you look at what kind of rates do we need to, you know, make sure that we're adequately charging up the system, so to speak, and putting it out in a fair manner. And I think that's where they just come up with a general rate that goes across the board. But that doesn't mean that if the board wants to look at options that we can't. So, I mean, internally, we brought it up and we have, uh, a recent conversation with one of our users, which predominate, like dominates the amount of water that's being used. So we have looked at that internally. What I would have to do to bring that back is sit with Jason. Like I said before, you have to find the drop off is so significant. There's a lot of people that are in that category of 100,000 or less. And it drops off significantly from over 6,000 accounts to 75. So you'd have to figure out, is the number 50,000? And then when you dropped on to 50,000, Jason was telling me that's a lot of like smaller commercial businesses might fall in that like restaurants. So that's where you have to kind of figure out what is the end game of coming up with a tiered system? Is it for the people who are just using, uh, a, an enormous amount of water? Or is it for, you know, factories or whatever? Like what, how would you base that? We'd have to figure that out. Cause half a million gallons in two months and Jason Sanders less than 10. So you'd have to drop that number down. And then the other thing that he brought it up was when you start to get into 200,000, 300,000, Jason, did you say that's both of the senior living centers?
Yep.
So, so that's the issue too, but that's a, those are technically businesses. So, I mean, that's what you have to look at. Does anybody have, I mean, an idea for us to bring back? I'd be more than happy to.
I'm happy with rate option one. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I'm, that's where I'm at.
I'm at there. I'm, I'm there also.
I, I, I would like to see the, see the numbers.
I'm for option one too, along with everyone else, but I think it's prudent for us to look into Mark's idea, Mark Carroll's idea. So, uh, just to see what, what you can develop or generate. Uh, you know, I don't know. Mark Haley might have a very good point that it wouldn't be that much more money anyway. But I'm kind of thinking about the meatpacking place, um, to be honest with you in terms of what they predicted and what they're actually using and so forth. So, uh, that's kind of what I had in mind when, uh, uh, Mark Carroll said something about, uh, surcharge for, uh, extra use. I don't know. Anyway, that, that all said, I'm for option one for tonight in terms of the decision-making tonight. I think we should, um, not an absolute decision, but certainly my opinion would be to go with that, uh, option one as well. It actually saves everybody money in the long run.
What I can do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, I said, option one's fine with me as well. I did have a question though. We have a debt payment. Are we, was that 428,000? What was that on? Or refresh my memory.
There's two debt payments. So the first presentation, the 428,000 was for the general fund. That's a payment for the police station. Um, and this, in the water fund.
In the water funnel, I think it was 428,000, I thought it was. Am I wrong about that?
So this one's 496, the 428 was for the police station. This is for water improvements. So in this original debt that was taken out a few years ago, it was for water improvements, a water tower. And basically what happened is, uh, we spent the money on water improvements, water main and so on. The water tower became so significantly more expensive than the original budget number of $2 million that we, at this point, that's just on the list of projects to still do for the future. But that they, that, that, yeah, excuse me, that debt payment was about, I think, $6 million, six and a half million. And it was also included the building of the two, uh, two wells. So that was the buildings of all eight and nine as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. So like I was saying, I can come back, um, if you want. It sounds like the board here, out of the two options likes option one. I can bring option one back. And then what I could do is, uh, Jason, I can come up with, um, maybe some way to, uh, you know, just maybe we can come up with some facts or some numbers about those high-end users. And, and just say, okay, if we were to increase X by a certain percentage, it would generate this amount of money and that would then relate to a rate, you know, increase to the residents that might be a little bit less. And, and kind of show you that option, just so you have the two options if the board would like me to do that. That's what I can do.
When you mentioned that, another plant possibly, and that would be because of why?
So and that's, and that's where I was going. We're doing the water source study. The only reason you would, the reason we didn't show it on the screen is because we would only look to do another treatment plant if we knew we were going to stay on well waters, uh, for the, for the long-term future. And even if, and we started looking at shallow wells as an option, which we've looked at years ago before I got here. The towns north of us, for instance, Batavia, St. Charles, Geneva, they use a combination of shallow and deep well water because they have access to shallow wells west of the river. We don't have any in our jurisdictional boundaries that I'm aware of. So that's another thing that if we had that, you'd have to have a different type of treatment plant to be able to blend those waters.
It's more expensive.
So that was why the source study, what's nice about that is it basically tells you, hey, if the aquifer is good for 20 years, 30 years, 10 years, it gives you the, your options are to buy water from a neighboring community. My last town bought water from a neighboring community and had well water. Now they buy Lake Michigan water. So they're all over the map as far as where the water comes from. But you just have to plan for that because the changeover is always significantly expensive.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? No exec session, um, post adjourn.
Oh, should do adjourn.
Second.
On favor, say hi. Close the same sign. Have a good night, everybody.